And we're about there, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Look at that. Let's see what we got. We got a little bit more than a minute.
I rarely know. I'm serious. I really don't. I mean, I've been around some good ways to do it.
Come on.
I'm in the store.
Yeah. I think that, well...
For me, it's very, very bad.
I'm just letting you know what I'm talking about. He said y'all have already been doing this for a while. I'm not telling you to get up or do anything today. I'm just telling you. I was just asking about it. We got 20 seconds. Took showtime.
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure you don't name them tonight. Pass one down, go. Here.
I must need one, yeah.
You need one?
Evidently. If you're passing, I was told never to pass one up.
I just like to make sure my...
It's seven o'clock, you all ready? Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for an invocation and pledge.
God bless you, pray. Our dear, gracious, heavenly Father, thank you again for this beautiful day that you've given to us, the break in the rain and just the wonderful temperature this time of year. And we thank you for this time that we can come and do the business of the city. Thank you for this opportunity to guide us and then give us wisdom beyond what we have. But be with us now as we proceed, and we give you the glory for what's done here, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Tell me the pledge, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Ulmer, the role.
Here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Harry Fox, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from January the 2nd. Council, you've had an opportunity to review these ahead of time and check them, make sure they included everything you would like included. If that's the case, a motion to approve will be in order. If not, now would be the time for any edits.
So move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a series of appointments to the municipal court judge positions. I'll let Ms. Ulmer explain that.
Yes, Harry White is recommended for municipal court judge, Jay Choak for assistant municipal court judge, and Samir Patel for assistant municipal court judge. They are recommended for your approval.
Any questions or comments, and if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And all three of those are approved unanimously. Now, Ms. Ulmer, if you will do the duties of swearing in our five city judges.
We all swear in front of the oath of constitution of the United States and state of borders, and then you all expect to serve as guardians of charge in the portions of this department, and then you faithfully start to use your office or other U.D.R.
I do.
This morning, you could decide what we do this week.
We appreciate you and thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, God.
I'm going to take a bit of executive privilege right here. We have an item that's at the tail end of the agenda. We have some folks that are here to partake in that, so in courtesy to them, I'd like to move the final item on the agenda for the Tony Morrison Memorial Bench to move that to the agenda right now. So Ms. Reed, if you'll come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to be here on behalf of a citizen working group that applied to the Tony Morrison Society for permission to place one of the memorial benches for their Bench by the Road project in Cartersville. They were given approval by the society in December to do that, and so now we come before you for permission to place the bench. The stated location that we would like to place it is in Friendship Plaza by the fountain and the Little Free Library overlooking the train tracks and the train depot. The DDA Board met this morning to discuss this and did make a motion in support of the placement of the bench as well as some sponsorship of it. That is how they are raising their money, through sponsorship, so no cost to the city or anyone else except what they choose to submit to that. And if you have any questions, of course, I'm happy to answer them.
Should've asked this in the work session. I certainly don't mean to blindside you, but how much, do you know about how much they are needing to raise for this project?
The bench that they have in mind is a $5,000 cost for the bench itself, and then we have some, basically for interpretive signage, the actual unveiling event, as well as the cost to place the bench securely in the ground. We're looking at some in-kind donations from people who have worked with us in the past for concrete work in that capacity and other sculptures for downtown, but the cost for the bench itself is $5,000.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions from Ms. Reed on this? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And we appreciate those who are here to be here for this item. You're welcome to stay with us through the rest of the meeting, but we also aren't going to be offended if you've got somewhere else to enjoy the rest of this evening. Thank you for being here. You're certainly welcome. All right. Back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Mr. Manino, you have an appointment to the Planning Commission, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of four of our Planning Commission members will be expiring on January 31st. Those members are Stephen Smith, who is the Ward 2 appointment, Harrison Dean, who is the Ward 4 appointment, and Jeffrey Ross, who is the Ward 6 appointment, and additionally, Lamar Pennley, who is the mayor's appointment. Those terms are for four years. The mayor's appointment is for two, and your approval of these, gentlemen, is recommended.
Thank you. Any discussions on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our audit presentation. Mr. Reiner, if you'll get us started on that.
I'm the mayor and council. Tonight, we have Adam Fraley from Malden and Jenkins' Partner, and also Christopher McKeller, lead auditor on our audit, here to present the 2019 audit. And I'll turn that over to one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. My name is Christopher McKeller with Malden and Jenkins. I was the director on the audit, and I also have Adam Fraley here with me. He was the partner overseeing the audit. The audit results have been discussed with management and discussed with council at the earlier work session, so I'll kind of briefly go through the audit results and hit the high-level information. The financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on those financial statements. We have issued an unmodified or clean opinion, which is what you would like to have. I'll hit a couple of the financial statement highlights. The statement of net position for the governmental activities reported a net position of approximately $72.5 million, and the business-type activities reported a net position of $238 million. There was an increase in the net position for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, for governmental activities of approximately $3 million, and business-type activities of approximately $16 million. The general fund had a fund balance of approximately $5 million for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, which is approximately 19% of general fund expenditures. And the general fund fund balance did decrease approximately $3 million for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. We did have two findings this year, one material weakness, one significant deficiency that was discussed earlier, and we had 11 management points or management recommendations that don't rise to the level of a finding, but are recommendations for management for improvement. The rest of the information in the auditor's discussion and analysis is upcoming standards and other matters that we wanted to make you aware of. And other than that, unless there are any specific questions that y'all wanted to go over, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Christopher or Adam? I do appreciate y'all coming up. As you mentioned, we did have a rather detailed look at the audit presentation earlier in the work session, so I appreciate your time and diligence with that. I don't think, there's no action required by us on this, correct? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate y'all's efforts and also the efforts of Tom and our finance department in preparing all those documents. Wanted to make note of that. Mr. Gillum, you have the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you with the second reading of the ordinance change for the tennis court reservation software and app, and just a reminder from the last meeting that we had, we're proposing a two-hour court rental fee per court for $5, and the point of sale for each reservation will be 2.3% with 10 to 20 cent per transaction fee as well.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
I just have one small question.
Yes, sir?
And this is for Dillon Park only and not at court, right?
Not, it's only for Dillon Park.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I think we covered this before. This is just if you want to reserve it, it's not to be on the courts.
Yeah, we're not gating the courts to where you have to go through a gate. We're not, our tennis center attendants are not going to be policing who paid, who didn't. It's for if you want a certain court, or if you want to make sure that your group or your opponent want to have a court to play in. It doesn't affect USTA, Alta, the Etowah Tennis Association, it doesn't affect any of those. Those are already, will be scheduled for their times that they've requested.
Long story short, if you go out there and you want to play tennis, if you decide you want to go out there and hit some balls with your kids or a buddy, you go out there in the courts, and if there's an open court play on it, and then if somebody comes up and shows you on their phone that, hey, we've got this court, this is Court 4, can you please move to another one?
Absolutely.
They'll just move and play.
Yep. We're not, we're not holding fast to that sort of, you know, you paid a reserve of whatever quarter time.
But if you know you want to play at 10 o'clock on a Saturday with your friend, and you want to make sure you've got a court when you go out there...
Absolutely.
This is an app that instead of calling our tennis guy at 8:30 at night and saying, hey, can I have, can we do this?
Yeah. You can go on your phone or on your computer laptop, and it'll be real time that you can see what's available.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Next item is approval of a resolution with the City of Cartersville, Bartow County, Bartow County Board of Assessors, and Anheuser-Busch regarding a $100 million plant expansion by Anheuser, which will also include 12 new jobs. There is a resolution and then the memorandum of understanding that goes along with it, which authorizes a standard tax abatement. It is important to note that there is no cost to the Bartow County taxpayers for this, and if something goes wrong with it, they also have no liability whatsoever. All the liability on the situation belongs to Anheuser-Busch themselves. The resolution and the MOU are recommended for your approval. They have previously been approved by the Development Authority of Cartersville, the Bartow County Tax Assessors, and Bartow County.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, next item, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is an intergovernmental agreement between Bartow County, Cartersville, and the CBB. The agreement states that the parties would share the cost of funding a farmer's market coordinator position, which has been previously held by Regina Shaw. The coordinator will promote the market, recruit vendors, enforce market rules, and collect data associated with the market, and we request that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, you have the next couple, please.
Good evening, everyone. First up's our second change order on the wastewater plant project. I think everybody's familiar with that. This has been going on for a while. When we did this last in October, we had sort of informally agreed that we would do these every six months, but we've had a, an issue come up where our first milestone for the contractor is coming up this month, and they need the extra weather days to get finished. So they've asked that we formally amend the contract to reflect that, which is why we're here earlier than we had originally thought we would be. In addition to that, we're going to true-up the contract for money as well. There have been several items that have come up, issues with line locations and relocations, and I would consider it all the standard stuff that you get into in building a project this size. So the two issues for this change order are the addition of eight days to the contract performance period in each milestone therein, and an additional cost of $37,840.99 for the items that were detailed in your package that are a collection of different issues that have come up since the last meeting that we discussed it, and I do recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you have the next couple, please.
Good evening, everyone. First up's our second change order on the wastewater plant project. I think everybody's familiar with that. This has been going on for a while. When we did this last in October, we had sort of informally agreed that we would do these every six months, but we've had a, an issue come up where our first milestone for the contractor is coming up this month, and they need the extra weather days to get finished. So they've asked that we formally amend the contract to reflect that, which is why we're here earlier than we had originally thought we would be. In addition to that, we're going to true-up the contract for money as well. There have been several items that have come up, issues with line locations and relocations, and I would consider it all the standard stuff that you get into in building a project this size. So the two issues for this change order are the addition of eight days to the contract performance period in each milestone therein, and an additional cost of $37,840.99 for the items that were detailed in your package that are a collection of different issues that have come up since the last meeting that we discussed it, and I do recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. This next project is a water line relocation that we need to do. If you recall, back in 2014, the Water Department put a new water main in along Etowah Drive, and this was a part of that work. During that project, we had a bore underneath West Avenue, and in April, I believe it was last year, we had some flooding in that intersection, investigations of all that. We realized that the bore that was put in actually impacted the stormwater line that was in that road that drains those, those, that intersection there, so it's causing flooding. Our pipe is in their pipe, and that's the problem. We did not know that at the time. We did do some investigations around that, just did not discover the problem essentially until we had a torrential rain that stressed that system, and it didn't perform, and that led to the investigations that, that we realized we were in their way. So we took bids, or I mean, we, we asked for a bid to fix the problem from the original contractor that built the, built the line in the first place. They could have the quickest response time. So CH Kirkpatrick gave us a price of $126,697.74. That will relocate our line, repair the storm line, and do all the paving and patching and dress-up work that's associated with that. We do regard this as an emergency repair. It's causing the intersection to flood. That can promote icing and other traffic-related problems going forward. We'd really like to try to get this fixed before we get into the rainiest of rainy season that's, that's coming up, so would ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Bob on this item?
Is there, is there a, like, time that you're going to try to keep this at, or is it like during the day, or is there a lot of that kind of disruption?
Some of that will be driven by the permit that we are given from DOT. The fact that it is a bore will help with traffic impact. We should be outside of the lanes of travel. Now, obviously, when we get in the road to fix the, the line that's been impacted, yes, we're going to be in the road, but that should be, if I had to guess, I would bet that's going to be done at night to just simplify the traffic control for the contractor, and I believe we have come up with a way to repair that. It should minimize the impact, should hold it to a day or two, and then we'll be, be back out of the road.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bob, chief, you have the next two, please.
Good evening. As y'all are aware, in September, council approved the PD to purchase five patrol cars and one admin package, police vehicles, Dodge Chargers. In November, Dodge canceled the order on the five patrol cars. Beginning of December, we rebid the Ford Explorer platform, and we got six, six dealerships that gave us bids. The low bid was $162,990. I recommend the low bid. That's going to be for five Ford Explorers. It's federal asset forfeiture money, and also including all the equipment, not to exceed $280,000. Equipment, I mean cage, computer, radio, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yeah, this is the request to purchase three undercover vehicles. These vehicles will be replacement vehicles that have an excess of 100,000 miles on each of them. One of them's got 150. So we bid out two SUVs and one Dodge Ram four-wheel-drive 1500 truck. We got four bids back. The low bid on the SUVs is $58,320, and it's courtesy Automotive Group. The low bid for the truck is $33,922, and that's from Robert Lara, including equipment, light sirens. I'm requesting 90, not to exceed $99,000, and this is also federal asset forfeiture money.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Any other, any questions or discussion? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. The, Mr. Hampton, you've got the next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. First item I had on the agenda was a replacement 1,000 KVA 48 volt transformer. We've had to replace an old unit out at Shaw, 13. It's a pretty old transformer, and it's actually rusting out. We had a contractor come look at repairing it, and he said he could not repair it, so we have to replace it. We took in five bids. The cheapest bid came from Gresco for an Ermco unit to the amount of $29,820.50, and we request your approval for that purchase.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Derek.
Thank you. The second one is kind of a similar deal. We had a transformer fail at Oakfield. We, we had to replace the only one we had in stock. It's a special voltage, pretty expensive transformer. The low bid on that one came back at $55,855.50, and time is of the essence because we do not have another one. That one can be here in about three months, so that was a big factor in it.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, sir.
All right. And the last one is the invoice for our wonderful new holiday decorations we purchased this year. We purchased 27 of the snowflake-type decorations to go on the poles from Holiday Designs, and that amount came to $11,265, and we request your approval to pay this invoice.
I will say what I said in the work session. Credit everybody that gets credit, but the downtown, the downtown has got so many compliments for this holiday season, although there's a lot of different departments, but Lily and Tamara, and Derek and Tommy, and Public Works, and Electric, and just a lot of platitudes to go around. We're still getting them from how wonderful our downtown looked, and so appreciate y'all's leadership on that because all y'all's hard work, and we're getting all the credit for it.
Yeah. Sorry, we're glad to do it. We had, it was too, it was kind of self-serving because the old ones, we had to spend like three days repairing all of them before we could actually put them up, so this year we could just hang them up. So it was nice.
We're not going to have those.
We're not going to hang them up for a while.
Yeah.
Thank you. Questions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Derek. Mr. Porta.
Yes, Mayor. First item I have is New World Software, which is 2020 annual maintenance from Bartow County. It's used by all the public safety facilities. Our portion of that bill is $38,207.82, and recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next time is Barracuda Annual Maintenance for email archive, and total, that is $8,912.4, recommended for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Michael Hill.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Same best for life, right?
Ah, well, maybe. I hope so. Okay, my first one here was the residential meters. We bid out 200 residential meters. It's a sole source provider. This is Equipment Controls Company. I know y'all have heard me use that name before here. They're $90.21 apiece. The total to the 200 is $18,042. This is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, Michael, on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And, next one. We have a bill from Monroe County, Mississippi. This is for the taxes on our storage facility there. This is off of Southern Naturals Pipe. We use it quite often. It's recommended for your approval, and it is a budgeted item at $8,872.22.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come forth, council, this evening? And if you would, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Name? Can you go first?
Oh, yeah. My name is Benjamin Henderson. I was having a few problems with my property.
I'm sorry, sir. We need your address, just so our clerk can put it in the minutes, please.
Oh, okay. It's 2317 Palmetto Avenue at Southwest, Etana, Georgia. It's 2317 Pembell Avenue at Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia. And my property's located on 732 Martin Luther King Junior Drive.
Okay.
It's High Moon Drive.
Yes, sir.
I was having a few problems with the tax commissioner about land lot 334 and 335. Right now, I don't understand what's really going on, but the sole commissioner said he would talk to me about this later, maybe later on this month, try to correct this matter. I am Etowah. You know I'm Etowah. I'm proudly chief of the Etowah Tribe here.
Okay.
My mother is full-blooded Etowah. My grandfather was full-blooded Cherokee. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, the problem that Ben really has is that...
Ma'am, if we could get your name and your address, please, for the...
My name is Dolores Bunchkeimer Bay, and I live in my skin. And Ben is having problems with his, the problem is that 41 Connector seems to own quite a bit of land that they didn't pay for. If we look on the county record, the land, the 334, they never paid for that, according to the county record, yet they moved it into a trust and paid two, five, almost half a million dollars, little over half a million dollars, to the 41 Connector, which moved into 41 Connector, a trust. But the problem is, is that the land says that it's worth $35,000. Now, if they paid a half a million dollars for it in 2005, how could it in 2020 be worth $35,000? And then, how come it didn't pay any taxes? So if we go back even further than that, we went down to the archives to investigate about them, that he is full-blooded Etowah, that the majority of the people that are located on Martin Luther King are full-blooded Etowah. Well, you're on their land. This is Etowah territory. They never seceded, so there's no compensation being given to the Etowah for you using their land. Now, if we take the same example of what happened to the Aboriginals in Australia just recently, they petitioned the world court to get 2,700 miles of their land back, which means that all those buildings, et cetera, that are on their land, they now have to pay a tax to the Aboriginals, and that tax goes into a trust. So the, the problem here is that these people have to argue for a street and argue for the taxes to be reduced on their street, when technically, all of this land is Etowah land and theirs. So our problem with this is that today we're issuing an open records request. We want to know what, how come this has never been resolved? This 20, this 41, 41 Connector seems to own everything, and they're not paying any taxes. They own the, they own most of the commerce that's downtown. They don't pay any taxes. Now, how does, how does that happen in Cartersville? And that's what we're, that's what our question is. So I've already, I'm, we're already putting in a, I'm telling you, we're asking for an open records request, and I'm saying to you that we want to know, how come 41 Connector doesn't pay any taxes? How come 41 Connector stole properties? How come 41 Connector is doing all of this in Cartersville, and no one seems to know about it? And that's what our quest, that's what our open records request is about. Ben will be issuing all of you a letter to ask you the same question. There's four questions. The email went out today containing all of his information. I'm sure some of you got it, and that's the open records request that we have. So that request is also going to be coming to you in a, in a letter form.
We'll need to get that, that open records request needs to come, because I know I didn't get an email from it.
Yes, you did not. Sorry.
Yes, I did not.
You did not. Yes, you did not. I'm sorry. You are the city manager. You did not get a open records request letter.
One of the council members did get that request, Mayor, and made me aware of it right before the meeting, and has forwarded it to my email, and the city responds to all open requests, open records requests within three days of receipt. I haven't read, read, you know, haven't had a chance to read your request tonight.
That's correct.
But we'll be reading it, and you'll get, response will be sent to that address or via email, whichever way it came, you know, probably by Tuesday at the latest of that. Well, Monday's a holiday, so Wednesday at the latest of next week.
What, what I would rather do is that you put it to us in writing, in a, in a letter form.
Okay, yeah, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that.
So we'll be sending that out to you and then, and looking for a response.
All right, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come for counsel this evening? Yes, sir, step forward. Yes, sir. And again, your name and address, sir.
I'm Larry Henderson. I'm addressed to 9 Patterson Drive, Cartersville, Georgia. I have two concerns that I'm worried about, about Martin Luther King Drive. Do y'all have any way on the dock anything for improvements of Martin Luther King Drive, the top of the hill, you know, behind all these? Well, my concern about it is, what happened was, they, they had, were taking the kids up the hill on the bus. All of a sudden, they started dropping off at the bottom of the hill, and there are no sidewalks there. So to me, that made it unsafe for our kids. So back when I was, my wife was living over there, and it was in the county then, but not in the city, they were, they were going all the hill with, with the kids on the bus. All of a sudden, they stopped. Okay? So I want to know if you all have any plans for that, you know, to make that safer for, for the kids over there.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, the first thing I'm going to do is I'll ask the school system.
Yeah.
Why they're not going up to the top of the hill.
Right.
Which might help.
I got, I got great grandson up there, and, and he's walking the streets every day, going home.
Sure. Second, second thing is, is we can only solve the problems that we know about.
Okay.
So now that you brought a problem to our attention.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, because I, I'll tell you, it's the first we're hearing of, of this concern or complaint, so.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
All right.
Okay. Any other businesses that need to come for counsel this evening? I want to remind everybody that city offices will be closed on Monday in observance of Martin Luther King Day, and so if you have any kind of services, like a garbage service, that won't happen on Monday, they'll get it caught up on Tuesday, so if you've got services on Monday or Tuesday, just put them out Tuesday and be patient. Our guys will work twice as hard on Tuesday to make up for not being in there Monday. There'll be services. I know there's going to be a parade that's going to start at 1:45, I think that's correct, from, from our civic center, and that'll be, the march will, will culminate at the county judicial center, and there'll be a short presentation there, and then the march will continue back to the civic center. So I want to thank the MLK Committee, headed up by Linda Kellogg, for the great work she does with this every single year. I know there's a lot of people that work hard to make that happen, and I look forward to those festivities over the weekend. Anyone else? If there's nothing else, Chair, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Not get a hur-.